Certain days of the month, or is it as needed?
Typically, they have been trying to meet when they're needed on the second Tuesday of the month.
Okay.
But, I mean, I think that they would need to poll the members once, you know, when somebody is appointed to see if that still works for everybody.
Anything else?
I think that's it.
Yep, go ahead.
We've done a couple of different things down in Green Bush, one of which is we've tried moving buildings. And the other is that we've kind of gutted them out and we've kind of rebuilt behind the facade. And I'm just interested in your thoughts on either one or both of those approaches.
I think any time you can reuse a building is a good... If you can find a reason to preserve and allow an existing structure to continue providing value, I think that's a good thing.
Even if you had to relocate it?
Even if you have to relocate it.
All right. Also, Karen, do you have any questions?
No, I mean, it sounds like you've read the... Have you read the zoning bylaw?
I have.
Identify what the board is asked to make recommendations on?
Yes.
Okay.
I can't claim to know it by heart, but I've been able... I'm familiar with it.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And we will be in touch.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
Have a Merry Christmas.
You too. Merry Christmas.
Is Richard Taylor...
I saw somebody.
Yes, yes.
It's a little noisy out there, isn't it?
There's like a whole party going on.
It's a Santa Claus.
The very light.
It is wonderful to be back in front of you. Such nice, familiar, friendly faces.
It's still a non-paying job.
All right, Richard Taylor, welcome to our interview process for design review. And if you can go through the motions, tell us why do you want to be on the board?
Okay. Well, it's been 30 years since I actually was in an architecture practice. What I've been doing is I've been in the industry all that time, but I've been working for a software company that develops software for architects and engineers. So I have a lot of experience with the architecture and design industry, and I'm passionate about Situate. I was on the planning board, as you know, for 12 years. Wait, 10 years, I think. Now, I'll think about that. Two terms and a alternate, so whatever that adds up to be. And I'm just very passionate about good design in Situate. I try to follow what's going on and, you know, keep abreast and make sure that it's the best that it can be. For instance, just recently, I've been at the public, what is it, Public Building Commission for the senior center, and we were able to, I think, influence the design in a very positive direction. I'm still not extremely happy about the fact that the Gates Building is potentially going to be demolished, but at least the design on the table right now is much better. So, you know, that's... I feel like I bring a lot of experience to the table in the sense of working with different architects around the world, basically, and being able to travel around the world and see other villages that are similar to Situate, but yet different.
Bill?
Sure. I think you're kind of a known commodity, but let me... One of the things that I've been thinking about, and I haven't come to a conclusion, but let me ask you the question, that is, design review seems to be more interested in facades or directed towards more interested in facades than construction material. And I'm just wondering whether that emphasis is correct or whether we should widen to come back up and look at construction material.
Well, really, the devil's in the details, and I think materials do make a big difference. And personally, I've been quite disappointed with 50 Country Way. I think some of the materials that were used there were maybe not exactly what was specter, or at least didn't come out the way I expected them to. And in fact, even on the balconies that are protruding out from the building, there's a lack of detail that was originally on the drawings. So details do actually are important, and the construction and the materials can make or break. As we discussed quite extensively with the Toll Brothers project, you know, the materials were of great importance to seeing that that was the best that that could be. So that's why I do advocate... It's kind of a strange situation to be here because I did actually see Craig's resume. I connected with him on LinkedIn. We actually discussed quickly some things. And I do think that him being a registered architect and having a lot of design experience in multiple firms is a huge asset. And, you know, I'll be before the board here and say, like, I want the best for Situate, whatever that ends up being, obviously. So I want the best person to be on the design review committee that can represent Situate in the best way possible. So I do think that there has been lacking on the design review committee an architect since Don Walters left. So the people that have been on that committee, they're excellent, very good, but they don't have maybe the architecture background that Don brought to it. So I think that Craig would bring that, and so, you know, I was kind of a little bit schizophrenic because at first I was like, oh, you guys didn't even, like, think about me. Because I think the email got missed, was sent to the wrong address. And then I put my hat in the ring, but then I saw Craig's credentials. So I don't know his personality, but from his experience and his credentials, it certainly seems like he would be a very good candidate and member for the board. So I'll just go ahead and say that.
Well, thank you. Ken?
I guess one thing I'm curious about, Richard, to talk to you, obviously, like Bill said, you're a known commodity, I guess, but I... One thing that design review sometimes comments on too is kind of how a project fits with the site features and landscape and things like that. And I was just curious to get kind of like your two cents about how you, being on the design review committee, could maybe help come advise projects that might fit better with the... In terms of like site design and not just architectural elements.
Well, there's the massing, there's the site. I mean, they're all kind of combination together, you know, that fits the project. And I think that for what we're dealing with here in Situate, it has to be very sensitive to the character of the area. Hence, I'll go back to the senior center that's on the table right now. I think it's very important that the design of the senior center reflect not only the massing and the materials, but the character of that site, which is a beautiful site. It's across the street from Lawson Tower. It's across the street from the Unitarian Church and the cemetery, all around the National Register of Historic Places. There's the Cuthbert House. There's the historic Little Red Schoolhouse. So in that particular case, that site, excuse me, is, I think, a huge factor in looking at not only the design, but how does it relate to the site? And what are the materials and the paths and the access? One of the things I wasn't too happy to hear in the last meeting was that there was going to be a vinyl fence separating the abutters on First Parish, I think it was, to the... So as you're coming on First Parish towards Situate, it would be on the right. So again, that's something I know the abutters wanted, obviously, because they didn't want the headlights turning in and shining into their homes. And we all remember, what was it, Curtis Street, the situation there? Or what was that called? Blanchard Farm, thank you. It was off Curtis Street. Thank you, Ann. So there were situations there, but I do think, again, all of that does is a big impact, and we need to consider that. I'm not as, let's say, versed in like plantings or landscape architecture. That was never my forte. You know, I had a few classes in school quite a few years ago, but that was the last... Even when I was working in practice, it was mostly design and not on the landscape architecture side of it.
Thanks.
I don't have anything. I think Bill covered all my questions. And so you know, obviously, because you're a known commodity, you know that it is an advisory?
Yes.
All right.
Absolutely.
And that we all do the best we can. And how is your travel situation?
Yeah, that's the one thing, you know, one of the reasons, obviously, you know, I'm still very passionate about Situate. You know, I miss the planning board, but I think that with my work schedule and travel schedule, it just seemed like the best thing to not run for another term. And so the travel schedule hasn't been too bad, and I know the design review only meets when there is a project available, so sometimes it's, you know, once a month, maybe even once every other month. And it's not something that has to be... It has to be advertised, but it can be, I think, a little bit more flexible if the committee member said, well, it's a Thursday instead of a Wednesday. I think that could be potentially something that could be done. So that's why I thought it was a little bit more flexible, and I could potentially work around my schedule. Although the second half of the year hasn't been as bad as the first half. Although next year, in 2019, I will be doing the conference, I believe, in Australia in May. So I've got a couple international trips that are scheduled.
All right, thank you. Karen?
No, so you're familiar with all the design guidelines in the zoning bylaw of what the design review committee is supposed to make recommendations on?
I believe so.
Okay.
I certainly would have to refresh myself, but I don't know word for word. I do have a question, though. In the last video that I watched, you said that the Ford Place was the first mixed use. And I was thinking, wasn't 50 Country Way the first mixed use?
This is... It's not in that other area, right? It's in a different... It's not on Country Way.
Okay.
It's off of Ford Place. It were starting another area.
Right.
So it couldn't... It didn't fall into the criteria of being on Country Way.
All right, but it's still in the Village Business Overlay District, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's really, in one sense, is it in fact mixed use because there's one itty-bitty little office?
Right. Well, as you said, it's not as mixed use as we would like, but...
That's right.
It's a start.
It's a start. So, Richard, thank you so much for coming in.
Nice to see you.
It's nice to see you.
Wonderful to see. In fact, I might stay because the Conway project is of great interest to me, and...
The Drew project.
All right, the Drew project, you're right. It used to be Conway, right? And also, I'm planning to go to the Green Bush EDC meeting on Monday. By the way, I printed that out. Is it really at the...
Maritime?
Maritime Center? That's a small area.
Well...
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Well, I remember when we had it at the brewery, it was like overflowing.
It's 69 people at that.
Yeah.
We'll see. It's Christmas time.
So whatever the decision, I'm happy with, and no matter what, you're not going to get rid of me because I'm going to be around in Situate and trying to advocate for the best that I... The best design and Situate that we can be.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thanks. See, you've got a minute left.
Five, actually.
So tell me about the gate school. What are they going to do, save the facade?
Well, they're not saving anything, no. What they did is the first design, jokingly, we referred to it as the Brady Bunch House. It was very suburban. The second design, they're actually just almost recreating it. It's extremely similar to 50 Country Way. I mean, they're not saving anything, except maybe the cupola. But they are planning to reconstruct the brick facade, the gable, the columns. So it's at least, it's as they say, it's referential. Whereas before, there was no reference to what was there before.
Well, okay, thank you.
You're a good engineer.
Okay, good.
You could have used an HVAC guy earlier. We've got architects and we've got engineers now. What we need is HVAC.
We just want to make sure that the television can catch it.
Hello, good evening.
This is a presentation of the Green Bush discussion of the Drew Company on the MBTA parcel. Okay, if you identify... Who is the person in charge?
I think that's me today. Tomorrow, that could change. John P. Drew from Drew Company. Thank you for letting us come in tonight. We had been in front of the board. It's been, I think, almost a year, I think, last time?
Time flies.
It's been a while anyhow. If not, it's been half a year. And we wanted to just kind of show you the project again. We'll come in front of you in a more formal setting, we hope, by January.
Can you get this on camera?
Yes.
Thank you.
But we want to walk you through kind of where we were last time we met and where we are today. I will say that nothing major has changed from that time, so we're not here to report any significant new changes. If anything, the project has really improved, and we've been trying to refine building layout, design, and kind of just the overall feel of the project. So just to run you through it, we're still at 78 units, which is where we were when we last met, of residential spread over four buildings. That has not changed. The dimensions of the buildings have changed somewhat. We have, if you look at the old Driftway first, and we have buildings identified as A, B, C, D, and E. Have a chance of that. So Building A is retail, retail in the front and commercial in the back. That borders a plaza, which we're working on as well, which we hope is a nice open air area in addition to the whole entire project. That is surrounded by a retail component as well of almost 2,000 square feet. So we're hoping that creates a nice little area of activity and interest for people both going on to the T, but also the residents, and also people from town. So that's kind of an area and hub of activity that we're really working on designing. I can let Jim, our architect, speak a little bit more about that. Building B is split between residential as well, and we have... How many units in that building?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one units. Oh, sure.
Do you have some extra copies if anybody in the audience would like to take a look at?
We do. Sure.
That'd be great.
I can give you mine.
Yeah. So in case people aren't aware, I know the board is aware, just to... I should back up and say that the MBTA required that we maintain a certain number of spaces on the site, so that actually dictates where we can put buildings on the site. So despite it being a four-and-a-half acre property, we actually are pretty constrained with what we can put on the site. So that's why you see a large amount of parking in the back and kind of up what we call North Road. The MBTA has agreed to that configuration. They think that that works well for them. And for us, it's fine because it moves the residential towards the street and keeps it all kind of tight together. Jim can talk a little bit more as well about we've been working on how the pedestrian experience and walkways and how you get from the lot to the MBTA, the Green Bush line. We've been very conscious to make that safe, but also kind of appealing to people who are visiting. And also that it's very clear if you're coming for retail or residential where you're going. So that's going to be clearly indicated, and we think some of that's just done through design. So those are key features. What's changed, I guess, is we've, I think, for the positive, is that we've opened up between Building B and C a lane where it has before. We didn't have that, but that makes it a little bit more... A little bit clearer on where, you know, where you are in the site, where you're going. We have work to do on landscaping. We're just... We haven't really even started that yet. This is a preliminary, kind of just look at what we might be doing on the site. We have done a parking... A traffic study, and that has come out and looks positive. We didn't run into any issues with that. And overall, we think, since we last saw you, it's improved quite a bit. There were some comments back about Building A and a look at Building A, a look overall of the... Of all the buildings, and we've improved upon that. Has... We're shooting for more of a New England feel. I think we saw you before, Building A wasn't fully designed, and I think we're getting close to something that we all really like. With that, Jim, do you want to kind of walk through any?
I think the kind of the important points, if you connect the dots from the kind of the heart of the residential area, which is between Building B and C, up going up between Building D and E, and then there's a walkway that connects to the east of Building B. So you can come across and go down. If you look at the aerial, I think it shows it fairly well. You can come down and go straight across to the platform. I'm sorry, you flipped. So this is all geared to being in your apartment and looking out the window from your bed and seeing when the 8:10 train's about to take off. So you can, if you're judicious and you can move quickly, you can just go down and out. So you can cross over here to the end of the platform. This is kind of the main entrance into the platform. So there is a walkway that connects here behind and comes through and in through the plaza and, you know, across the main pedestrian way into the kind of the end and the center point of the platform. So we went to lengths to be able to create a public space, as John said, kind of here. So we also went to lengths to keep this as a major walkway. You know, we realize that we're not in Back Bay or Newbury Street, and that streets and walkways are really good, but here we don't necessarily have things that were connecting. Tried to create a public space here with the concentration of the retail. On this Building B residential, the ground level here is retail as well. So we surround this plaza with storefronts and retail on all three sides. And we come in here, we segregate how we get in. We come in here and we go through, and we come in here. So we park underneath both of these buildings. The site, as you well know, is stepped. Kind of a serious increase in grade from the low point just here at the end of South Road. And here, there is probably 25, 30 feet of climb precipitate, and it's quite precipitous going up. So what we have taken advantage of is the buildings themselves, as they step up the hill, kind of are set on a grade where we go have a level where we cut, and then we have a retaining wall at the back. And then we go across and step up again, so we can actually build a podium for our buildings, and we can come in underneath and park. So we get covered parking just through contouring the site. And then we can build the apartments above with sticks, you know, either plot... Excuse me, either panel construction or nominal stick framing. That's what we're looking at now. So we use the slope to our advantage by being able to contour and park underneath the buildings. So we think that's a real asset, especially in this weather in January and February when there's snow.
Or March.
Or March.
Just one clarification. Is there a walkway between Building C and D? Does that go all the way through from the back parking lot?
No, it does not. We connect, because what we've done is in the... We call it the east lot. There's a, right at the center of the kind of entrance into the link, we can get in from both sides. So there's a barrier for you can directly go on grade from the east lot into the lobby. And we really like the idea of sharing the lobby. That way, we can have, instead of one elevator in E and one in D, we can put the two together, and we can take advantage of the efficiencies of two elevators, especially if one goes out or if there's a heavy load. So we thought that was a real plus. And the idea of then all of the residents of E and D kind of coming together and meeting in the link, we're going to create at the lobby level kind of a nice public space for everyone that's a resident in the building. Maybe coffee pot, some comfortable chairs, actually meet your neighbors, get to know them. So that's what we're saying for this area in here.
I only had one thing to add, which is in the conversation with the MBTA, they were concerned about coming up the North Road, sidewalk being off the North Road so that people would have a direct route, either walking straight into the... Back to the parking or walking straight down. And that they could maintain their parking on and off of the North Road so the continuation brings you back up. So they thought that was less confusing, I guess. So in the sense it would be more streamlined for people using the MBTA. The other piece is that what we attempted to do within the central area was that sort of to try to create a sense of community between the buildings so that had more of a... For residents of the housing, that was more their space and gave us, created a little bit of privacy between the buildings. And then with Building A, we thought that was kind of shared between people using the T and people who are living there, or people who are simply coming there if there's a restaurant or something added there. So that, again, created some separateness to the whole piece. And the plaza in front of Building A, we thought, again, was kind of a community location that could be used by all, by everyone. So that was the purpose in that. And the other purpose, I think, that we tried to accomplish, it's a little bit different than what we originally showed you, is Building C is a shorter building. The idea being as you drive in on Driftway, you can see in and see up behind it to the other buildings. But again, it wasn't sort of block by block by block. It was to try to create a different scale as you come along Old Driftway. Again, make it feel more like with the spaces between them, more like the plaza, more comfortable, more safe, I think, and brighter. So that was the purpose in all of that.
All right. Questions from the board?
Why wouldn't the MBTA want pull-in parking along the North Road?
They... The MBTA and our discussion with John, who has had a few more than I did, is have... They don't use the... They don't use the upper lot frequently, but they do from time to time spill out of the main lot, let's call it. Up, and as it comes up that North Road, that's a way of just sort of, in their mind, of continuing this strip up to the top. So it was contiguous. I think the other concern that they have is a concern about, again, safety, being clear line of sight as you travel in and out of their lots, for both people walking from their lots and people driving in and out of their lots. So this is sort of a way of sort of bringing the bottom to the top and vice versa in a more or less a straight line.
Because we...
Have someone go through and make sure that people that are parking there have permits and are paid. So they're in their designated spaces. Makes it easier for them to monitor that.
Yeah, I guess so. It just seems strange. When you handle the levels the way you are, you're really kind of hurting the skateboarders.
That's one downside.
They'll get over it.
No, actually, they're going to go under it. I'm also.
Karen?
Can you explain to me what makes this quintessential New England architect? This looks like the West Marine. I am always curious about this gable roof and stuff like that.
Yeah, what we tried to do... What we've tried to do is, when you say gable, you say shingles and corner boards and classic casings around windows. We've tried to emulate and use those facades for the buildings. They're... and use those facades for the buildings. They're, the ground level, as you go underneath from going uphill, is parking. And it, it doesn't show here very well, but we will delineate it for you clearly as we go on. But if you look at the, the aerial perspective and you look at Building C, you can see in the front, there are large openings, and that's the parking garage. And what we've done is come up with a detail, which we think will be quite nice, of a, a metal screen system. There's a lot of them. You can see if you look through landscape magazines. Screen systems that hold vines and green. So our idea is to make big holes into the parking, fill it with a, with a screen system, and then plant Boston ivy on those screen systems. And then that in itself is penetrable. Air can go in and out through that. And as you're walking along old Driftway, instead of looking at a, what is a difficult thing to handle, a view into a garage, you know, we'll be having a view into kind of big green lattice panels, which we thought would be really good and nice. We, also, the, yeah, Building B does have retail when you get to the bay or the ground level that's adjacent to the plaza for A. And so we have, you can look, it's, it's subtle at the scale, but we've pushed that building out to the front line. And so the retail piece that sticks out is you're walking up the sidewalk from the, from the corner up old Driftway. As you, you're looking up the sidewalk that's sloping, you'll be able to see the ground floor of the retail sticking out, you know, kind of, and the last gable will be out to the, to the street front. So we thought that could be quite nice for the retail and for the building manipulation.
I, I just want to add a couple of quick things. One is when we, we do the formal submission, I think it'll be, it'll show, it will read much better. As Jim pointed out, the, the base of it should be green with the ivy. The, then you should be seeing clad board, and you should also be seeing, as you go, as you look at it, not only the gable, the roof, but you should be seeing, we're going to put on the, the French balcony, small balcony to break, again, the siding. So, so the view will be, I, I think, it'll look very residential, and I think, I also hope it looks very, you know, much like situ it. So that, that was the goal and, and with, between the clad, the cladding and the, and the balcony and the type of window we're using. So that's what we're attempting to do. The, the A building is a little bit different because it's retail. There we went with the, the metal roof and some changes. But again, it, it doesn't read, when we, when we submit to you in January, you'll see that there's a, there's also a balcony spot there that really is, again, to sort of take the, the three-story, two-story kind of break. So it's not a, it's not one flat facade that you're looking at, and it moves up and down.
Don't want to create like that cannon effect.
Yeah.
Yes.
No, we shouldn't.
This aerial view is somewhat unaffordable because you're looking at the whole expand. And we'll have a lot of high-level views from the sidewalk, walking and kind of up, seeing the building. It's going to look a lot different than, you know, the bird side looking down.
Very big.
Yeah.
This makes it look very large.
Yeah.
Pieces. You know, along the sidewalk and the, the gable ends are kind of projecting out past the, the other part of the building. I think that breaks down the shadows and the shade. This is, is the east, southeast facade. Fortunately, we have a good orientation for the building. These are the floors. And we did, we put the entrances, for the two buildings in front for B and C, we put them on Driftway, on the sidewalk. So that's where your garbel is, right by the foyer, and that's where you go in. And when you're in the garage then, you can connect directly into that foyer to go up here.
But we also expect to have awnings there, coming off the building and whatnot. Again, so when you're standing there at the sidewalk, you're going to, it's going to feel different. That will all be in the, in the, in the January submission. We used, purpose today was for us to come in and sort of show you where we're moving to, and then to finalize it and present in January.
We should mention the one plan, the plan that's got the percentage on the floor, parking and sidewalks. That is meant to demonstrate that all of the buildings, both residential, commercial, and retail, that parking requirements, code, body code. This shows how we comply with those, those requirements. So this is more of a technical drawing. And the green, that's, the areas that are poached green are open space. So we, we comply with the open space requirement as well.
And that was one improvement. We, we're here, before we were actually sharing spaces with the MBTA, which was not ideal. But now, under this plan, that we do not, and they'll be clearly marked and everything else is sized.
I think one thing that your input would be valuable, and that we think is important, is if you look along old Driftway, along the street, we have cut in to the piece of land and shown parallel parking along that whole length. We call it public parking. The idea being is you're driving in and there's retail, when you get down to Building B and A, you know, that's retail. In a retail situation, you want to drive and then you see the store you like, and so you park, you know, and you go in. So we're hoping that the public parking there will be set up in such a way that that will be, those spaces are precluded from someone who's going to take a train and leave their car all day. So with simple two-hour limit, everybody that parks there is going to want to go to the retail. So it's a, it's kind of a really nice, direct storefront connection.
It'll only work if there is enforcement.
Yeah.
The only way it will work.
Right.
So, that said.
Yeah.
Ben?
Um, yeah, a few things. Could you speak to me a little bit on the housing side, what the percentage of affordable units is?
We meet the, the town's requirement. I think we have, it's 11 units, I think, that we have.
Okay, so it's just going to be what the bylaw says?
Yes, correct.
Um, I know you probably haven't done a lot of, you're still conceptual, so you haven't done a lot of engineering per se, but could you maybe just concept, conceptually kind of discuss how you're going to maybe deal with stormwater and what sort of low-impact development strategies you'd want to use on the site, given its proximity to the water supply?
Right, yeah. The, it's, it's pretty obvious where the, the water's going to come from, right?
Yeah.
Kind of uphill and down. And so Horsley-Witten Group is the civil engineers we're using. And we're looking at ways that, as this sheet of water kind of comes across, it gets collected kind of along the edge, and it doesn't go down and in and through. But it gets collected, and then we kind of deal with it, put it in the right place.
But it's collected behind Building E and D, as it comes off, as it runs off of the parking lot. The collection's up there, where we have some parking. Should we catch beer?
Yeah. It's on the backside here, but as it comes this way, it stops at D and E.
We can submit the end of it.
Yeah, yeah, that's more, yeah.
Well, you, you've mentioned it a number of times, so it would be quite cautious.
And they've been assisting us on this project now for well over a year and working with the town. So we'll, we'll make sure that's all laid out for you clearly.
Yeah, they're really good.
And then my last question is more just to update this board. It's not necessarily our decisions and our purview, but could you give us an update on kind of the water and sewer situation?
Uh, yep, that we, um,
As we can.
We've
That's what we've been through the last year while we've been
We've worked with this, with the town on that, and we have come to an agreement with the town on the amount that we'll be paying. The town, so that's, that's been agreed to by, I think it was an October 12 meeting with the selectmen. And that was after kind of working with them for a year. The town also submitted, this project is part of a application for a grant for Mass Works, and that was successful. That was awarded October 31st as well. So we are going to, obviously, be paying our, our veteran fee as agreed to with the town, the selectmen. And in addition, though, the town is, has the benefit of the Mass Works grant at, at, with just two and a half million dollars. So, but we, we did, we, that, this board had asked us to go back and make sure that, before we ever, you know, appeared formally, that that was, that was worked out and has been.
And, and the, and the grant is being used within the town to, in fact, do a, a particular project for two and a half million dollars, which, in fact, is going to free up a great deal of capacity. So.
Thanks.
It's all good.
Rebecca?
Yep. So as far as the parking goes, do you have, and maybe I see it, I just can't tell, parking, if someone that is in here has, someone staying overnight or someone that's visiting for a long time?
We've been talking, talking for the, no, I mean, if the spaces are allocated as they're required per unit. So if a unit isn't using a space, they'll, they'll be, someone could stay there. But we have been in conversations with the T, MBTA Parking, about other ways that we can either lease spaces or spaces could be made available during certain times. So if people are coming in either to the, the retail or visiting guests, we're working that out with, with the MBTA and how that will, that will work. But they're aware that we may need additional spaces at times. And we've, we've, they're agreeable to that. There'll be some, deal will work out when we close, actually.
It's going to be tied into the closing on the property with the MBTA.
I'm sorry, can you, just didn't understand.
It'll be, it'll be part of our agreement with the MBTA when we close on the property. But what, what we've talked about was an allocation of spaces that can be there every day from five, let's say six at night until seven in the morning. So for overnight parking, they'll make those available. And then another group of spaces that, again, depending on the pattern of use, where if we want to lease those spaces for them and have them as additional spaces, they'll make those available. They would like, on the second piece, they would like to sort of have us start and then see the pattern of use that they get when we start building, and we'll finalize the second block of space. But the first block of overnight parking will be available and worked out. And we're talking about where to locate it, whether we locate it sort of in a certain area above and allocate it just on, let's say, a corner or something along those lines. So that's what we, that's where we left them. We had that discussion, as a matter of fact, when? Last?
Last week.
Week with them, so to finalize. So, you know, on snow removal and other issues like that, we're going to work with them on that. They have a snow file up the top where they move their snow to and various things like that. So again, this road configuration reflects the fact that they want to be able to get easily up and move their snow and manage the, the control of the site. There'll be some overlap on, on, basically, as we go around here, where we'll probably snowplow with them on that top road between the upper lot and, and the housing. It's just, depending on the snowfall and the amount of snowfall, who's there. But they'll have, we'll work with their, with their operations people and all of that.
We should point out too, that this, this diagram, if you look at each building, it says the number of dwelling units in the building, and it also indicates the number of covered spaces. So when you are a renter, you'll be assigned a numbered space underneath the, the building. That'll be your space. No one else can park in that, that's yours. So that's going to just eliminate, you know, we park most people that way. There's only a few, and they're up here. So, yeah, the parking's for the retail and the commercial.
But since we started this negotiation with the T, we've been clear that we have to work something out with, for additional parking, and they've been very agreeable to that. And they'll probably come, we'll have to sign a maintenance agreement with them when we close with everything that John's talking about. So that'll be included in that agreement.
And one last question.
Sure.
So the parking that's behind, it's the MBTA's, you're saying it's not used very often? So you won't have a lot of people, you know, walking kind of across your property to get to the T?
No.
Right. If you go there now?
Yeah, it's pretty empty. That's what I'm thinking, but.
It's just, you know, school buses and the drivers of the school buses, and they park way up at the top.
Okay, thanks.
Are you all set? Is there the ability over by the coffee shop to be able to walk out to the old Driftway?
Yes, yeah, there's, it doesn't show very well, but on, on this, the orange indicates sidewalks that connect up to the Driftway and back to the center of the residential.
All right. I'll open it up to questions from the public. Identify yourself, sir.
Richard Taylor, Six North East Farm Road. Just had a couple of comments, really. I think the design has really improved since the last time it was before the board. I like the, the character of it. Just a question, on the overall aerial that you show next to Celtic Pause, it looks like there's a fence pretty close. Is this the current property line? Because I know right now, the property line at Celtic Pause goes into the parking lot.
It does.
So is this the correct, I should say, this is taking into account the current property line, right?
This is the correct property line. Right now, the MBTA paved over some of their property, actually.
Okay.
And I don't, now that happened, but we're sho-, we're showing where the basic our property ends and that their property.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
And then on the, the first floor, where the garage entrance and the green wall, I noticed on the, in the rendering that you have, there's a, looks like a, a couple of little, I'd call it gazebo's or entrances. What is that, is that an entrance to the garage on the corner of the, the two buildings?
Yeah.
Building B and Building C?
That's the front door.
And that's the front door of the building itself?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's elevator stair and then direct entrance to the parking.
And that would have the same metal roof as, to match the retail?
Yeah, most likely.
Oh, that's nice. Nothing to comment?
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Callie Keighley, Sixty Driftway. I, I just look at this and I think the parking's got to be inadequate for retail space because, and that's a killer for any retail. You've just got to have those spaces out front. And then you can go around, you know, residential parking and metal. Because I think that's what's going to happen, if there's a second car in any of those apartments, they're going to pocket that suddenly down, down that center, in your, on, on the parking space. Parking's always a problem, now, what you build. And what you're saying, there isn't a lot of people, the building's empty now, but it won't be. Right, a ship will come up with apartments like this, and when people start coming to the town, it's growing, that's what you want. So to come, to be shorthanded on parking to stop, I think is a mistake.
Yeah, this is not. This is, complies with the code for the amount of retail that the code says we need. So the, the center area that, see where it says center way, retail, retail, you know, those are all dedicated to the retail in A and B. Everybody that lives here parks under their building.
I'm saying it's got to be more than one car per apartment.
But that's, that's part of the code. If you've got a two-bedroom apartment, you get another space. One bedroom's one, two bedrooms, one and a half. So for every two, there's an extra.
You said it was 78 units.
Yes.
So it was all one-bedroom units?
No, no.
Seventy parking spots.
No, no. There's a lot more than 78 parking spots.
Okay. Your point is well taken.
Yeah.
And we will take it under advisement, and I'm sure that the applicants will do the same.
Yeah.
Okay? And it is a good point, and thank you for bringing it to our attention. Richard, one last question.
It's actually more of a comment, I just wanted to see if you guys had thought about this. If you take the train right now at Nantasket Junction and at West Kingham, it actually covered over the parking areas with a, a structure and a solar structure.
Solar panels.
So have you taken that into account if they do cross on the, the Driftway?
Yeah.
Like having your partners sort of look into that, or, I guess, are you trying to coordinate with the T? That's what I'm asking you about.
We, we definitely are. I, I will say, they're, I think they are considering that for the lot that's in front of the, the station. That's something they're, they're very much in favor, the, the solar project. So we, we are taking that consideration. We haven't really done our view study yet.
As long as you know it in your design, that's good.
It's not, that, yeah, it's not very attractive at all.
In some ways, it's dependent on the orientation of the lot. Nantasket Junction and further on, they face the right way. So when you put a, a collector on top of the parking in its current configuration, it's the, the right orientation for the collector.
Okay.
That isn't always the case when, when the parking is in a different direction.
All right. Thank you. All right. We have to move on to our zoning. Thank you so very much for coming in.
Thank you for having us. And happy holidays.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Our pleasure. The more we talk about this, the better it will end up being.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Well, we'll have a five-minute break so we can set up the next. All right, we now have a presentation from Ted Bovitz and Brad Washburn about upcoming zoning in Green Bush.
Great, thank you. So I'm Brad Washburn, Planning and Development Director for the town. And we are here tonight, I'm here with Ted Bovitz, the consultant that the Economic Development Commission has worked with to prepare the bylaw. So if you remember, just going to give a quick bit of history. I mean, this is something the town's been working on for a while. In 2014, is it 14 or 16? Just a few years ago, several of these vision plans were prepared for all of our business districts. And zoning, it was a piece that was always anticipated to come later, to basically create a bylaw that was consistent with the goals and the vision that we were trying to accomplish within the vision plan. So we had a meetings in January and June where we gave folks kind of a primer on what was included in the vision document and then said that we would be coming out at a later point to talk about proposed zoning. Ted will go through all the kind of nitty-gritty of what's in there, but tonight is to give the board kind of a courtesy preview of what's to come. And just real quickly, there's going to be a meeting next Monday at the Maritime Center at 6:30 where we'll be going again kind of over this for some of the Green Bush stakeholders. It is open to the public, but this is more of a targeted meeting for the neighborhood. There will be a zoning workshop with the planning board in January 10th. We'll be again kind of going over this, answering any questions, et cetera. And then obviously there will be public hearings, I believe, in early February. So plenty of opportunity for folks to come and learn, ask questions. And we can kind of make sure that everyone has plenty of opportunities to have their input on this proposed zoning. So with that, Ted, I don't know if you just want to kind of walk through and then we can do questions.
Yeah, so as Brad mentioned, we've been at this for about three years now, started with the Economic Development Commission and you were the chair at the time. Oh, actually, there you were, yeah. And so we, you know, basically trying to identify what the challenges and opportunities are in the Green Bush Driftway area. We started to look at, you know, existing land uses, development patterns, what the businesses were down there, what types of residential uses were there and really what the challenges and opportunities were in terms of future development, future conservation, future recreational enhancements. I mean, there's a lot of stuff going in there, going down, down there between the Green Bush Train Station, the Historic Village, Green Bush Village, Long Country Way, the residential development on the south side of the Driftway, Widow's Walk and the Conservation Park along the North River. So through this visioning process we conducted with the EDC, we were sort of able to sort of illustrate what the overall vision was over the next 20 years in different sections of the district. Starting with the, you know, the Historic Village Center, so showing sort of incremental mixed-use development happening over time, filling in Long Country Way and that's starting to happen with the microbrewery and the mixed-use development and some of the new trades services type businesses. And then looking over towards the train station, you know, what's happening with the Drew Project potentially and some mixed-use development, a little bit higher density mixed-use development, you know, being focused on its proximity to the train station and providing some, you know, alternative types of housing for people that are either just starting out in Situate or maybe looking to downsize out of larger homes and into a place where there's a quick access to transportation as well as other things to do. And then on the south side of the Driftway, the vision is really sort of a little bit more of what's already there. You've got the Riverway Townhouses and James Landing and there could be some smaller scale residential infill development there that takes advantages of the river views and so on. And then more sort of commercial and mixed-use up along the south side of the Driftway. To really sort of form a village center, a new Driftway Village Center in that area. And then further on, you can see on the bottom part of the drawing, the Widow's Walk Golf Course, possible idea of having some sort of banquet hall where you could have weddings and other types of public gatherings, maybe a boutique hotel, maybe a new clubhouse. Just some minor, you know, enhancements that, you know, make a better facility for people to gather in this, you know, really nice public space. And other, you know, minor enhancements across the street along the Conservation District in the North River area. So that's really the long-term vision. Oh, I forgot to mention, the one other piece was the current transfer station. You know, in the long term, you know, maybe the possibility that gets relocated somewhere else in the community. And if so, that would make a really fantastic business park. Really Situate's only opportunity for a business park and a good location, being close to the train station and being close to 3A. So that's a long-term plan for possible transition into more of a, an opportunity for economic development, business development. So the question is, how do we go from this long-term vision in different parts of the, seven different parts of the Green Bush Driftway area? How do we facilitate that through our land use and development regulations? Here's a current picture of the zoning. It's complicated. You've got several different zonings. You've got four base districts, including the Business and General Business District, Commercial, Residential, Salt Marsh Conservation District. Then you've got five different overlay districts. And a lot of the properties in this area are divided between two or three different zoning districts, whether they're base districts or overlay districts. In a lot of cases, the boundaries of the districts don't follow the property lines. So it makes it, you know, makes it difficult to do any kind of significant development in there. The other thing is that the type of development we're talking about, you know, mixed-use and more sort of a traditional development pattern with buildings closer to the streets and, you know, traditional architecture and strong, you know, walkability pedestrian environments. If you look at the dimensional standards for the General Business District and the Commercial District, it's really difficult to achieve that because, you know, the building envelope is really sort of disconnected from the sidewalk and the street and you're allowed to put parking in between the building and the street. So you're not really formulating a good sort of village center. You're not enhancing the fabric that you've got there already with the old Green Bush Village. And this is the base district zoning for not only for the Green Bush area, but for North Situate, for the harbor, and again, it's a challenge. And if you look at, you know, a little further, if you create the sort of 3D diagrams out of the dimensional standards, you can see that there's a disconnect between where you can build your building and the sidewalk and the streetscape. So it's those types of things that we have to and want to address in the zoning regulations. One of the ways to get around that is the Village Business Overlay District, which was adopted a number of years ago, which is a good tool and that's what the Drew Company's using for their project. But it's got its limitations as well. While it, you know, allows for more density and mixed-use and that there's dimensional standards that really make it, you know, closer to the street and sort of forming a village center, it's only allowed for mixed-use projects. So, you know, if you've got commercial residential projects in this district or any other general business district, then you're not going to be able to follow those more traditional development patterns that we're looking for.
Could you, if you want to have a conversation, you can go outside, okay? Thank you. Ted, excuse me.
Yeah, no problem. So what we're trying to do is sort of weave the two together, between the base districts and the general business and the Village Business Overlay District, so that we facilitate good quality development that allows for a mix of uses, allows for residential and allows for certain business-type, industrial-type uses in this sort of broad area. But again, making sure that the framework allows for traditional development patterns and quality open spaces, you know, complete streets where you've got, you know, good walking environments that are connected to the buildings so that over time, you know, this new village center starts to take shape. So what we're doing is we're calling it this new base district, the Village Center and Neighborhood District. And that really provides a framework for all of the different sections of Green Bush, but ultimately it could also provide the base district's standards for the harbor and for North Situate as well. And the idea again is that you've got, you know, specific standards for building design, as you do today. You've got design standards for commercial, mixed-use and multifamily residential buildings. But this has standards that not only relate to the building and the building envelope, but sustainable standards for the site itself, design standards for the streets and for open spaces. Rather than sort of arbitrary standards like 20% of your lot has to be open space, we actually want you to define that space so that it's quality, either for the people that are living there on-site or that it's publicly accessible so that the people in the district get to enjoy it. And again, you know, creating that strong interface between the private developments and the public spaces, you know, with, you know, certain treatments of the sidewalks and the sods of the buildings, on-street parking and other things that, you know, creates sort of a lively, vibrant district. So in order to do this, there's a lot of work to be done in terms of, you know, updating some of the sections and revising others and adding this new Village Center District to the fold as well. So, you know, for example, we've, in the zoning package, the amendment package, we've updated the table of use under Section 3, 300, to allow for these new districts in the Green Bush area. We have also created some changes or provided some changes to the Village Business Overlay District. All the design standards that are in there, we're integrating with the design standards that are in Section 750 because there's sort of overlapping and potentially conflicting design standards. So we want to merge those two and make it a more efficient and consistent process. We're also making some changes to the housing or the parking standards to allow for certain conditions to offset parking and provide special types of parking. And we're also adding standards, you know, as I mentioned before, for open space, for public realm, which means public streets and sidewalk improvements, the fair housing standards, which are currently in the Village Business Overlay District, moving those into a separate section so that as we create affordable housing, not only in the Green Bush area, but other places around town, that these standards, which make a lot of sense and are following the state requirements, would be applicable to those other projects as well. So the, as I mentioned before, there's different districts or sub-districts in the Green Bush. The Gateway Business, that's the first part of the Driftway Corridor, the Village Center, the Green Bush Village Center, the Transit Center, the new Driftway, the Transit Village centered on the new Driftway. North River Residential on the south side of the Driftway. North River Conservation, which is the Conservation Park and Widow's Walk, which is the Driftway Conservation Recreation District. So in order to do that, we're removing the Planned Development District, which is another overlay district on top of a good portion of the Driftway area. And what we've done is incorporated a number of those ideas and standards into the new design and development standards for the Village Center District. Changing the, again, changing the use table, adding the columns and the uses allowed for the different districts in Green Bush. You know, it's sort of a mix between residential and commercial and mixed uses. And then in the park, allowing for more industrial and light industrial and fabrication type uses. And then, as I mentioned, taking the affordability standards out of the Village Business Overlay District, moving those into a new section so they apply townwide. And the design standards, integrating those with the ones in 750. And then, you know, I think once, you know, this is adopted, there's a possibility that the Village Business Overlay District could be removed because it's integrating all the new standards in this new district, this new base district. So the Village Center Neighborhood District, the purpose of it is really to create new investment, reinvestment in the area, you know, vibrant, authentic, resilient district, high-quality streetscapes and open spaces, access to multimodal transportation, high-quality housing choices for people of various age and income and household types, as well as a broad range of business development opportunities. It's really one of the only areas left in Situate for, you know, business development on a large scale. So we created a new map to show the different districts in this area. And what we did first is we split up the maps, the current existing maps, so that you could see how the new ones take shape. So basically, these are the base districts in the current area. And you'll see that the Commercial District, which is pink, it doesn't follow property lines. So it makes it kind of difficult, a lot of properties are split in those areas. And then the red is the Business District, but it's also where the Overlay District is for Village Business Overlay District is in the Green Bush Center area, Village area. So this is the new map right here, showing not only where the different districts are, but also showing where we're sort of focused on areas that need to be, you know, protected, kind of conservation lands such as Widow's Walk and the North River Park, areas where we're focusing commercial development, at least at ground level, which is on the new Driftway. And then buffer zones. So a buffer zone, we have on sort of the upper edge of the new district, which faces the R2 to the north. And there, we're saying that there's got to be a significant transitional buffer, you know, both through screening and through landscaping. And that certain buildings can't be any closer than, you know, 25 feet away in a certain heights so that we don't interfere with, you know, the well-established neighbors just to the north of this district. As far as the commercial frontage areas, the pedestrian frontage zones, what we're saying is that at ground level on, you know, in the heart of that Transit Village, we want to see commercial and then up above that or behind it could be residential. Again, saving the best opportunities for commercial at ground level. So we've identified, you know, certain business, certain building types and assigned design standards and dimensional standards to each one of these. Some of them have, you know, more detailed design standards in 750, including the live-work building, townhouses, commercial buildings, multifamily, gas stations, which are by special permit and we're calling gas backers because the idea is that rather than your standard gas station site plan where you've got the canopy and the pumps out front, we'd want the convenience store out front by the sidewalk and put the canopy and the gas pumps behind it. And then mixed-use buildings. So these are all the buildings that currently have design standards and they would continue to have design standards under 750. And then other buildings that would be allowed in the district, obviously, single-family homes, cottages, which are smaller single-family homes with a maximum footprint of 1,400 square feet, two bedrooms, again, trying to create transitional housing for people that are just getting started or people that are trying to downsize, another housing choice. Parrot houses, which is a fancy term for duplex. Civic buildings and then, that's not a live-work building below, that's a fabrication or a flex building, an industrial building. So these don't have any specific design standards, but they're allowed in the districts. So once you have the framework in place for the Village Center District, Village Center Neighborhood District, every district that's assigned to it has a one-sheet, you know, one-page, you know, list of things that are addressed in this district. So building placement and occupation, the dimensional standards, the setbacks, the minimum and maximum setbacks, the lot size, the use of the property, the different building types that are allowed in the different districts, the design standards, parking standards, and then signage eventually. We don't have the signs all written up yet, but basically, everything can be put on one sheet in terms of the particular dimensional standards and design standards for each of these individual districts. And then we have a chart for density, the allowed density in the different districts. So for example, in the, in the, in the Green Bush Village Center, the density would be, for townhouses, it would be 12 units per acre with up to 16 by special permit. For, in the Transit Village, you can go up from 12 units possibly to 20 units per acre, which is where it is today. And with mixed-use buildings and multifamily buildings in the Transit Village, where this train station is, you could go up to potentially 36 units, which is where it is today, at least if you just structure. it is today, at least if you just structured parking under the V-Bod. So, again, the open space, the, the public realm and the fair housing standards are in separate sections now, um, so under the, uh, the design standards, these are the current design review standards under seven fifty. Again, we've integrated the, the V-Bod standards with them, and we've created a number of diagrams, illustrations to sort of, so people can better understand, uh, what, um, you know, what the, what the design standards mean. So, things like the scale of buildings, the placement of buildings, you know, this diagram shows corner lots and the opportunity to retract a building off the corner and create some open space in front of it, like a, an outdoor seating terrace, for example. Uh, the height of the building, you know, the different height elements, whether you're doing a pitch roof or a flat roof, uh, requirement, if you're doing a flat roof of a parapet, so there's a design on top of the, on top of the building, um, the ground floor level above the curb, um, and then, um, basically, the, the, uh, the setback and step-back requirement. So, in the V-Bod, in the harbor, you have to do on the, on the second floor, you have to do a step-back of seven feet. That's so that you don't create a canyon effect on front street. So, it's the same principle here in the Green Bush, you know, there are allowed certain heights at the, at the right-of-way line, the street line, uh, but if the taller the building is, the more it's got to be set back or stepped back, so we don't create a canyon effect. Again, we're trying to create, you know, a, a Village Center, but at the same time, we don't want something that's out of scale with, uh, with Situate. Um, again, architectural, uh, elements and, uh, facade, facade treatments, uh, which are in there today. We just created some more, uh, illustrations to, to show people what they mean. Uh, fenestration, so, uh, certain buildings, you know, mixed-use buildings, commercial buildings at ground level, we want to make sure there's sufficient window space, you know, make it interesting, uh, storefront interesting for, uh, people walking up and down the sidewalk. And then the different roof types and the, um, the minimum and maximum pitches for each one of those. And then, as I mentioned before, the, uh, the different building types have different design and, uh, and dimensional standards. Again, you know, making sure that, you know, if it's a commercial building or a mixed-use building, it's close to the sidewalk, if it's set back, there should be some sort of, uh, publicly oriented open space such as an outdoor seating area or a plaza, uh, you know, right, you know, the, the townhouses or, or single-family houses or multifamily houses would be set back a little bit, more further, uh, civic buildings would be set back even further than that. So, it's, it's not just the, uh, the, you know, it's not one-size-fits-all for buildings. It's really, you know, it's really, it's different setbacks based on the type of building it is and the, whether it's publicly oriented or private. And then just sort of other, you know, building, uh, special building types such as penthouse apartments that could go up on top of, on top of the roof to take, take advantage of the, uh, the views in this area of the North River and so on. Uh, so the other part is again, that interface between the private developments and the public realm, the streets and the sidewalks, and so we've created what we call a, a building frontage zone so that there can be some overlap, uh, either, you know, things that you can do in front of your building on private space, or certain encroachments where there's enough sidewalk, uh, that you can, you can utilize part of it for some activity or some, some element. So, for example, outdoor dining, you know, if we've got, if there's wide sidewalks created in the future down here, there may be the opportunity to use some of that space for outdoor dining, um, you could do outdoor displays, um, there could be, uh, projecting elements such as blade signs, uh, balconies, awnings, of course, and those sorts of things. So, again, we're trying to create sort of a, an interesting fabric as you're walking down the sidewalk, and different elements, whether it's displays or whether it's, you know, good signage, outdoor seating, those sorts of things to make it more interesting. Site development standards, um, we don't have to go into this too much. The, um, we've created a new section called Low-Impact Development Standards, and really what we've tried to do here is take different sustainable stormwater, uh, and low-impact standards that are kind of scattered throughout the zoning bylaws and put them all in one section, uh, so that they're applicable not only to the Village Center, but other developments, uh, whether the residential developments or, or commercial developments, uh, because there's a lot of good things in there, just a matter of finding them and, 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 you know, putting them in one space where they can, they can apply, uh, to, uh, other, other types of projects. So, that's what we've done, you know, we've, we've basically, uh, laid out a series of stormwater best practices using the state's, uh, Stormwater Manual, and showing different, uh, different techniques that can be applied, uh, for, you know, handling stormwater onsite. The idea is that, you know, as much as possible to, to treat your stormwater quantity and quality onsite, um, no, no release. Um, and then also, um, you know, as far as recreation and, um, even your, you know, your own private yard space, creating, you know, infiltration parks and edible landscapes and other techniques to, to create sustainable development, whether you're in a Village Center or in a, in a residential neighborhood. And then open space amenities, again, you know, rather than having sort of arbitrary standards for percentage of your lot, open space, what we're doing is laying out different types of open space, whether it's private or public, um, that is part of your development we want you to pick from. So, if you're doing a mixed-use project like the Drew Company, you saw in front of their commercial space, they've got a plaza, that's exactly what we want to see. We don't want the, the, the open space to be sort of the, the fringe area that they couldn't figure out what to do with, we want it to be something where people can actually gather and, 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 and enjoy. So, whether it's, you know, a plaza at street level, whether it's a, it's a park, whether it's a, uh, a rooftop garden or terrace, um, there's lots of ways to, to accomplish good space and, and something that contributes not, you know, not only to the district, but to, uh, you know, the, the people that are living in the district. The other opportunity that we've created in the Village Center is that if you, if it makes sense to the town, you know, it's up to, up to the town, you can provide open space improvements in lieu of onsite open space. So, you can contribute to, like, the trail that goes along the old rail bed that goes out towards Herring Brook and goes up through the backside of, of, um, of Green Bush Village, you can contribute to improvements at the Conservation Park. Anything that sort of benefits, you know, the recreational amenities and opportunities in this district is an opportunity possibly, you know, for the town to take up. And then there, we've got street design standards under this new section, seven fifty-three Public Realm Standards, um, so that, you know, if new, new roads are, are built somewhere down, down the, what, down the road, um, you know, they're designed properly, they're complete streets, we've got, you know, good sidewalks, you know, we've got on-street parking where it's appropriate, and again, it, it complements, uh, the development that's happening on either side of it. And breaking the, and breaking the, the right-of-way down into segments, so you've got your frontage zone, again, where there's some opportunities for display or outdoor dining or signage, um, versus, you know, your throughway, which is your clear path for pedestrian to walk, you know, a minimum of five feet, and then your furnishing area where you put the street trees, um, and those sorts of things. So, uh, the fair housing standards, I mentioned those are taken from the V-Bod and put into a separate section. Uh, parking standards, uh, we've provided, um, some opportunities for things like tandem parking, you know, we see a lot of that these days in these kind of apartment buildings where, you know, rather than having side-by-side spaces, you have back-to-back so that people living in the same condo or apartment, uh, can, can, can use that space without taking up a big footprint for parking. It, it really cuts down on the overall, uh, surface parking, but saving the same number of spaces. And then other opportunities like, you know, for example, in certain cases, having parking, having the opportunity to allow parking in front of the building, so that would be by special permit, uh, a, a single row of parking in front of the building, or, or street-side parking where it's actually, it's parallel parking in front of the building, which serves like on-street parking, but it's actually owned by the adjacent property owner. You know, it's a way to, you know, create what, what essentially, you know, looks and feels like a Village Center, uh, on-street parking, but is actually created by, uh, created by the developer. And that is a summary of a large zoning package that we have put together. Questions, thoughts, ideas?
This is a large amount to swallow.
It's a lot, yes, it is, yeah.
And I have a mantra of small successes. So, if we were to break this down into small successes, what is the most important item to go before town meeting in April to, people would be comatose by the time they get through this. No offense, Ted.
Yeah.
Well, I think.
It's just.
One of the important things to kind of understand here is it's not a tremendous amount of new stuff, it's a tremendous, it's, it's a lot of repackaging. So, when we originally came to the board, um, it was a Green Bush bylaw that was that big, and we didn't touch the rest of the existing base code. So, Ted pulled out some of those elements that should apply townwide, like the affordability standards, parking, so that what we're left with is still a little hefty, but again, it's all, it's, it's, it's a lot of repackaging, it's a lot of, I think, more detailed, um, it's getting more detail so that we get the type of development that, you know, the vision and what the board, you know, wants to see in Green Bush. So, without it, I mean, you can't be surprised when you don't get what you want if you don't provide that level of detail in the zoning and ask for, you talk about building placement, design guidelines, I, I don't think it's onerous to develop under such a bylaw. In fact, I think it gives you a greater level of specificity about, you know, what the town wants to see here. I'm not sure if you could dismantle this and do it in pieces, I mean, I'll leave that up to Ted. I think if you do it that way, there's a potential to get a little bit of it, but not all of what you need to do.
So, uh, all right.
That's, that's just my thoughts.
How does this relate to, and we had talked about this a couple of years ago, forty R?
How does it relate to forty R? Well, it, it's not forty R, but it could become forty R fairly easily. A lot of the design and the, the density standards and the, you know, the, uh, requirements for affordable housing and that sort of thing, those are, those would meet forty R fairly easily.
But the biggest thing that we ran into when we looked at this was infrastructure.
Right.
We just don't have at that, the infrastructure.
Right.
But this could segue into, because it's, it's all about the design standards.
Right.
That's right.
Well, in the design standards, you've got all the pieces for forty R. Yeah, I mean, you have to turn a couple of things here and there, but by and large, this is a, this is a forty law, forty R bylaw, it really is. So, that's, that's certainly a possibility.
All right. Okay, I'll open it up to the board. Bill.
It's a lot.
Yeah.
And I, I'm not sure that it's a hundred percent where I'd want to be, but it's pretty damn close to it, I think. The problem is, at least in my mind, is how do you sell it?
That's a challenge.
It's not a two, it's not, two years from now, I'm not going to be able to look down on any of those roads and sit there and see a lot done, I don't think, at least in terms of what we're looking for in terms of multiple applications. You're going to see one here and one there.
That's right, yeah. It's going to be incremental, yeah, yeah.
So, in my mind, you're creating a vision, and this is where it ultimately, what, what it ultimately wants to look like, and that as we do each sheet project to getting up to, to the land saturation, then this is the direction that it needs to be headed.
Right. I, you know, and, and, you know, you've got the Cumberland Farms, I think, is being not, it's gone?
Gone, gone.
But you've got, over the last few years, you've had, you know, you know, a series of development proposals and projects that have come before the board, and, you know, some of them, like the Drew, that, that fits in pretty well with what we're talking about doing here, other ones, not so much. Um, so, you're right, it's gonna, not, there's not going to be a big boom of, you know, new development in this area, but over time, incrementally, you'll see it. It's just a matter of where you want to, where you want to plug in these types of standards to make sure that, over time, you get a cumulative effect and you start to create these, you know, these Village Centers and these, you know, these spaces where, that meet the vision.
Yeah, but I think you're going to see the residential component first. I'm not sure how long it's going to take the retail to catch up or to become a driver.
I don't think retail's ever going to be a driver, but I, you know, you have to provide for it, but the reality is the best market opportunities are probably residential.
Yeah.
But you want to, as much as you can, you want to couple that with some commercial, like the Drew Company's doing, it's a small piece, but it makes a difference.
Yeah.
And where you, where, and you have to reserve those areas where you have the best opportunity for, for retail, especially at the ground level. And that's why you've got those pedestrian zones on a portion of the Driftway and a portion of the new Driftway, because that's where the traffic volume is, that's where the visibility is, uh, and that's really sort of the central point for that, you know, that neighborhood, that growing neighborhood.
So, how would you propose selling it to town meeting? Bring it in five bushel baskets?
Well, I mean, I think I, I would reiterate that it's, it's not a dramatic departure from where we are now. I mean, if you were to take the, the proposed zoning map back out, the majority of the, the districts are going to be open space or conservation, so you have what's, you know, Widow's Walk, the golf course, the area south of the Driftway, which is where the apartments and condos are, and, and, you know, that's large open-space districts. Where the MBTA lot is, I think that's probably the area most suitable and what would be most applicable here, where you'd see most of the development occurring in that area. Again, that's a blank slate now. Under our current zoning, you could choose, under the V-Bod, to create something like the Drew Company, or you could do a strip-style development like you see on fifty-three, which I don't think anyone in this room wants to see. You know, and then in Green Bush Village, again, we're not trying to kind of take an eraser out here to history, what we're trying to do is create more of some of the good stuff that we've already seen, and I think it's bylaws like this that allow and promote that type of development, rather than giving folks the, the option to opt out and just kind of do something that you could do anywhere.
Yeah, you know, basically, what we're doing is we're taking the general business district in the V-Bod, we're sort of merging the two together and coming up with a new bylaw that's more fine-tuned to, uh, you know, to the development that, you know, we want to see here. The fair housing nest's already there, we're just moving it to its own section, and most of the, the, uh, sustainable design standards are already there, just moving to a new section, and we're enhancing the existing design standards. What's, what's missing right now is that you've got design standards, and then in terms of, you know, evaluating and refining the building itself, you've, you've covered that. What we don't have is the other part of that, made, that, that, that piece, which, which covers the traditional development patterns. You may be getting traditional architecture, but you're not getting traditional development patterns, and that's what this new bylaw does. Green Bush doesn't do, or the general business doesn't do it. V-Bod attempts to do it, but it's only applicable to mixed-use, so we're creating this new Village Center bylaw, which gets to that development pattern, traditional development pattern.
And there's already significant interest in this district now, uh, for development. So, again, I think having something that provides a little better protection for the town in terms of what they want to see, in terms of what it looks like, what it feels like, um, I think makes sense. Otherwise, I mean, it's coming, whether we do this bylaw or not, development interests, because you can get density in those neighborhoods now, whether or not you pass a new bylaw. But to have a bylaw that is, again, a little bit more, it provides more guidance to both developers and the board, I mean, I think it's beneficial on both sides.
Okay.
But it comes in a little, I think, with the, the volume of changes, it's almost like, hi, I'm for the government, I'm going to help you out here, and I'm not sure that's the tone that needs to be set, but I'm not sure how you sell it.
Well, I mean, one alternative would be a, a forty R, which is an overlay district, replacing the V-Bod with a forty R, and hope that people chose to choose the forty R. I mean, forty R itself is, is, you know, that's, you have to sell that as well, and that's not something that is, is necessarily a home run, but you, you could easily make it an overlay district, and then you've already got the design standards for it.
Yeah, I mean, forty R just gives you a bucket to bring this up, the rest of it in.
Right. But I, but I, you know, I'm, there's advantage of the forty, obviously, there's advantages in terms of the, the, the money that's gotten from the state to make other improvements, um, but, um, I favor base districts. I think it should be clear that, you know, you're given density, your, your by right density is this, and then by special permit with other conditions is up here. Uh, the, the by right density in forty R is toym, you know, so that's a big jump for a lot of people.
And I think one of the ways to sell it, too, is exactly what we've been doing. I mean, we've been out twice to the community thus far, we're going out again Monday, we have another zoning workshop in January, a public, you know, one or two public hearings in February, there's been multiple opportunities, I think, for folks to weigh in, there's many more opportunities ahead, so, and we've had it. So we've had, I think, a tremendous amount of interest from property owners and business owners in Green Bush. So they're very invested. And at least the feedback I've gotten so far is that we're interested, we really like the vision. And this is, again, this is probably the most attainable way to get that vision. Otherwise, if you piecemeal it, if you break it up, if you make it optional, I think it makes it that much harder to get there.
That's the other thing, is that, you know, we created this bylaw, this series of changes, based on the vision that was created. So how do you...how do you get that picture that's in the transit village? Well, that means X, Y, and Z in the zoning. So it's a direct connection between, you know, the long-term vision and what we're trying to put together with the zoning standards.
But this fills in the blanks that when we did the overlay district.
Sorry?
It fills in the blanks that we created when we did the overlay district.
Yep.
Right.
When we did that, we came back up and it was...originally, it was much more stringent than what it is now.
Right, right.
Somewhat pragmatic and basically backed off on it, said, we'll come in, we'll fill in the empty spaces later.
Right. And the V-Bod is so much better than the base district.
Absolutely.
Yeah. It helps, but it's, you know...this is basically the permanent solution for Green Bush. But also, you know, it could easily be applied to the Harbors and the Norset.
I think that the way you reorganized, structured the bylaw, the bylaws so that the things that were generic, the multiple bylaws are taken out, combined in a single bylaw.
Yeah. You know, there's a lot of good things in the zoning bylaws. Like if you look at the Hammerock Village Overlay District, there's lots of good sustainability standards. But those are things that, you know, apply townwide. So what we're trying to do is sort of, you know, find those things and sort of coordinate them and put them in their own section. I think it's like you're doing the flexible open space development. Are you working on that, right? I mean, you know, I think the quality of the open space is really important. Now you'd have a separate section that says, choose from these options. It could be a preserve, it could be a park, it could be a trail. But it's got to be, you know, some attribute that the neighbors are going to benefit from.
No, right now, folks come in and count up the amount of green space in their parking islands to make sure that they meet the standard.
And they come in, they give us a number of 37 and a half percent.
Yeah, I mean, why not get rid of those and minimize those and have a usable open space?
Right. And it could just simply be a trail. I mean, but it's something.
But you're better off if it was 18 percent and it came back up and it was utilized...utilized across your property.
Exactly. That's what these standards are all about.
It'll hold me for a while, yeah.
Thank you. Patty?
Well, I applaud this really hard work. And while you hear only good things about what's happening in Green Bush, I only hear bad things. So when you go to town meeting, you need to have a lot of people who support this. Because I hear from people that it should be overdeveloped. That's the other side of this, that is such a...such a stark reality to what you may hear in this building. That's going to be a hard sell, I think. And I think this is a lot of verbiage. And you need to be able to assure people that it's not just happening here, it's going to happen in North Situate, which is a huge issue right now. And why isn't it happening? They're going to ask you that. How come it's going to be in Green Bush and not there when you already have the structure? You know what I'm saying? That's...so there's going to be a lot of...I hear, like I said, my personal opinion is that while it's right for it to be resold and built and it's the place to have it, people don't like to see land disappear. That's a huge issue. And while we have a lot of land, people never think they have enough.
So Patty, if I can, just for a sec... And in all honesty, I encourage those folks that are talking to you and not coming in to me to have them come in and kind of have this dialogue, because that's very important. And as all of you know, we have limited opportunities for any kind of development in Situate, specifically business, commercial, and/or mixed use. So we have Green Bush, the Harbor, and North Situate. Green Bush has been on this trajectory for a while, and we got money to, you know, work on this new zoning. And as you may know, we also have a grant from MAPC to start this same kind of thing in North Situate. So that, you know, we have, you know, updates we can provide on the regional sewer project. So, you know, we have a lot of things that, if you can just have the folks that are concerned kind of come in and have that dialogue. I can't find them if I don't know about them. But if they come in to me, as you know, I'm always more than willing, you know, to talk about any issue.
Rebecca?
I was just going to say, I think the way to sell this is that you're going to protect... Basically, the town's going to get more protection over...if you didn't change the bylaw. Correct? Am I correct about that?
Yeah, I think...I think not only more protection, but better quality development, better investment.
Which is, I think, what most people want.
Better amenities, better housing choices, yeah.
And I guess, again, the message...one of the messages to drive home is, you could do this now. I mean, so it's not...I mean, under the existing bylaw, you could build something, at least from a density perspective, that is pretty darned close to what is being proposed. I think this is putting a kind of...
With the V-Bod, yeah.
Yeah, with the existing zoning now, you can do this. So we're not trying to overdevelop. Actually, we're trying to encourage development where it makes sense, where we have train stations, where we have infrastructure, or we plan to have the correct infrastructure and leave the vast majority of town, when you're looking at a zoning map, the exact way it is now. Otherwise, I think you're going to continue to see development all over the place as opposed to trying to channeling it to these few areas.
Ben?
One thing I just want to address, like, I guess, logistically for clarification, because it seems like the fair housing affordability standard, low-impact development, or sustainable design standard, and parking are kind of going to get consolidated from various sections of the zoning bylaw and split out. But they're not per se going to be in a new Green Bush zoning bylaw. They're going to be kind of townwide, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So that, I mean, I'm all for that, and I think that's fantastic. But I just want to make that clear, because that could be another thing, depending on how this goes to town meeting. We need to make that abundantly clear, that that's kind of...we need to decide how that's bundled with the Green Bush.
Yeah, I mean...
You know, there might be a lot of people that don't want to...don't want to do LID, you know, development on conventional subdivisions that aren't in Green Bush, and they might push back. And then we don't want to derail the potential, you know, throw the baby out with the bathwater because of some...how things get bundled together there.
So, I mean, again, that's not uncommon for bylaws that are kind of incrementally updated over time.
Yeah.
Is that you have one bylaw that's up to date, and all the standards that you're required to have per the state, whether it be affordability, low-impact design, et cetera. And then you have the rest of your bylaw that might have been updated in 1957 or 1975. So we're trying to pull out the pieces that make sense to apply townwide, like we just said. And then just have the stuff in Green Bush apply to Green Bush, instead of having...Green Bush should be a whiz-bang bylaw and the rest be very outdated. And, you know, not require the same thing townwide.
Yeah, I'm all for that. And I think that that actually, aside from being a Green Bush kind of rezoning, this becomes an even more powerful endeavor for the town.
Yeah. We did...last year, we did a full evaluation of the zoning bylaws. And we just identified those spots that were in individual bylaws that really had applicability townwide. And that's really what we're doing with this process, is we're taking those out and making them, you know, applicable townwide.
So maybe that's a good preface to any kind of community presentation, especially town meeting, is that this, you know, the edits to the larger bylaw are the result of the town zoning audit. They kind of picked up some of these inconsistencies and out-of-date sections, and this is consistent with that.
Right. You've got two or three definitions for mixed-use buildings, I mean, and stuff like that.
Again, it's not uncommon. We're not...I'm not picking the bylaws. It's just a product of how these things get developed and evolve over time.
And it's not unusual for, you know, for efficiency and for town meeting purposes, to make things simpler, to just do a standalone bylaw, people can focus on that. You know, that's, you know, that's...and that's what we...there we started. But, you know, when we started thinking about it, you know, a good chunk of this really is, you know, townwide stuff.
Right, right.
Yeah. So, I mean, if this framework gets in place, then, you know, adding the Harbor at some point and North Situate, that's a one-page, two-page supplement.
Any comments from the public?
I think those 60 Driftways, just...I live on the Driftway now, and the traffic is pretty bad as it is now with not having any development there. How's that going to be addressed?
Any project, no?
See, this project shows four, I think, three or four cuts in the curves, and then, you know, it's...right now, there's one light there, and it's Saturday when everybody's going in the dump. And I talk about people stopping and trying to back it, the parking spots and the new developments with the parking out front, you know, rather than pushing to the rear and get off the road. Because that road, I don't know if it's planned to be wide or developed a little wider, or sidewalks on both sides, down to the harbor. But it's pretty tough here now.
Yeah, so any project moving forward, just like we do now, we'll go through planning board review, there'd be consultants on both sides. You know, if it trips certain thresholds for traffic review, traffic kind of improvement projects, if warranted. If it's a very large project, you know, that would trigger a state review and a V-Bod. So it's, you know, it's going to...again, any new development is going to, you know, impact traffic circulation, volume.
Something that gets triggered automatically by the town or the state?
Well, it depends on the scale of each project. So again, the existing processes that are in place will continue to review and evaluate traffic impacts and then mitigate accordingly.
Okay. One other question?
Well, one thing on top of that is that this year, we got a P-WED grant for infrastructure. It's wastewater, there's still to address the wastewater issue. But, you know, we also talked about the possibility of going back to P-WED and trying to get more money for streetscape improvements along the Driftway. You know, if we can do that, at that point, then we'd have to figure out what the long-term traffic picture looks like as you design your new, you know, street and sidewalks. So that would give us the opportunity to sort of think about, you know, this zoning and also the vision plan and what that might amount to in terms of new developments, and what that, again, amounts to in terms of traffic. And whether you need turning lanes, whether you need more lanes, whether you need, you know...
The other question was just, where does the floodplain fall on all this? A lot of this property is in floodplain.
Yeah, a lot of the properties south of the Driftway is in the floodplain. So if you look at the Towns Online GIS viewer, you can click on the FEMA firm layer. So again, most of it's south, and I guess the majority of any new development would be north of the Driftway. So again, that FEMA line wouldn't be affecting too much new development.
So if it involves course of a transfer station that was developable and then...
Yeah, pretty much near Driftway north, it's developing, yeah. I think it's not that you can't develop in FEMA floodplain, it's just building code implications.
Not meant for roads, maybe, for sure.
But again, most of that's already developed. If you talk about the Riverway or the wastewater treatment plant, that's all there. The new development opportunities are north of the Driftway and out of the FEMA floodplain.
But also in the Water Resource Protection District, much of it.
That's right, that's right.
And that's something that will be certainly addressed as time goes by, regardless of what is presented. It's all about water.
Yeah, I mean, all of the, you know, the FEMA floodplain, the Water Resource Protection Overlay District, all of those things obviously stay in place and impact, you know, any of the same developments as they do now, so.
They supersede any kind of base zoning.
Richard?
Richard Taylor, 6th North Farm Road. I just want to say that as a citizen, I highly support this. I think it's fantastic. But I also want to agree with Patty, is that unfortunately, I've only heard a lot of negativity out there, especially people about the brown water situation. They don't want anything to happen in town until that gets fixed first. And as you know, that's been a big, huge issue. And so I would...my recommendation would try to keep it as simple as possible. If you're going to town meeting, have the two maps, and have one shows the existing zoning, how...what a mess it is, and then show it as being clear and nicely delineated, and just say, this is what we're doing, we're cleaning this up. And just try to...just that, just keep it simple. Because if you get too down in the weeds, I think people are going to just be completely confused. And it's going to be a really hard fight. Because I know there's a huge faction of people, like Sid, they don't want any new construction, they don't want any changes until we, this town addresses our infrastructure problems.
That's a great point. I think what is important to note about zoning is it's not a project. I think people see a build-out map and think that we're coming with this big project with all the buildings shown as if it's fully built out. Zoning enables that. And again, as was discussed tonight, a full build-out is an incremental change as private property owners make the decision to develop their properties. I think an important comparison that would be to make is what you could do now in the existing zoning versus what is being proposed. And I think you're going to see a very, very small difference between the amount of density. And I think, again, on the whole, you're going to see more improvements in terms of where people put their buildings, what type of open space you get out of it, where parking is, and a lot of the pedestrian amenities. So I think we're talking about selling this. I mean, I think if you truly understand the benefits of it, it can sell itself, but we need to articulate those benefits very clearly and not confuse it with details that...
Right. And we'll also show examples, too. You know, there's a map, you know, a concept on it of, you know, new development. But we'll show examples of what that might look like when it's actually built, so people get a better sense of what the zoning really means. This can happen incrementally over time. Here's the types of mixed-use buildings we're talking about. Here's the types of residential buildings. Here's the type of commercial buildings.
But you can't...you can give them information, but you have to, as Richard said, you have to keep it simple.
That's what I'm saying.
You can't give too much.
Right. This is too much for a...
It is way, way over the top.
Yeah, that's right. It's not too much for the planning board, because I know you all can handle this.
But that said...
By Monday's night, this meeting will be a little bit different. It won't be going to town down the...
But the thing is, change is inevitable.
Oh, it's going to happen.
It is inevitable. We don't like it. And people come to Situate, and they view it as this quaint town. But as was pointed out in, I think, the Marit today, this is...this has become, and has been, a bedroom community. It is. It was when I moved here 45 years ago. It was construed as a bedroom community. We don't have business here. We don't have, other than Situate Concrete Pipe, the biggest employer in the town of Situate is the town of Situate. I mean, that's the way it is. So if we can figure out a way to package this, because we do need to go forward, we do need to have the standards, because it protects all of us. But people fear change. And when they pass papers for their house, they do not want a blade of grass to change going forward. But what they don't understand is, with their passing papers and moving into this town, they've changed it, because they're here. And this is a wonderful, wonderful community. And it's just that, a community. And so if we can all work together and you can package this in such a way that we can steer it through town meeting, I think we're ahead of the game. I really do. So, that said, Monday night, those of you who are interested, it's at the Maritime Center. Be early to get a parking space around the boats. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
It is a mouthful.
It is. And thank you for being the guinea pigs. We have many more presentations and we can tailor it and...
Please do.
Yep.
You know, if you're presenting some...
It's tough out there, come back to the choir.
Right, I mean, if you're presenting this to town meeting.
No, 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 I wouldn't do it. But, but, you know, as a board, if you've got comments and questions, please let me know.
We will, not to worry.
Because, you know, I go through and I find things that I'd like to change, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
We doing stormwater or flexible?
Yeah, flexible. So another, we've also put another placeholder, requested one on the warrant for changes to the flexible open space.
Is Brad leaving? Isn't he here for flexible open space?
I think he wants to have a conversation outside.
Ah, do we want to take a two-minute break?
Um, I can come, if you want a two-minute break.
Oh, he's back. Are you here to talk about flexible open space?
Yes, I forgot it was, sorry. I'm actually gonna probably defer to Karen on this one, but I, here we go. So as you know, in a recent project that was before the board, there was an issue about, Karen.
It was about the.
Ways you can donate open space to the town. So there was, I guess, what the proposed option is giving it to homeowners association trust. Otherwise, it was the Conservation Commission and the state. There's various land donation policies that some of the parcels didn't meet, so the Concom didn't always want the land. It's almost impossible for the state to take or want the land. So we want to give folks a third viable option. And again, this language used to be in the zoning bylaw, it was taken out at a previous revision. So essentially, we're adding back an option that previously existed. It makes sense. And again, it gives, I think, folks that are trying to do the right thing, a viable option to donate land or to reserve land for open space.
It was never actually in flexible open space. It was in open space development way back when, and then flexible changed at some point in time. And that's where the original wording that Mr. Bjorkland tried to do the citizen petition came from. But this gives them the option to have the land donated to homeowners, homeowners association trust manage the land, which is more, more, I mean, which a lot of people say it works. Because it's, I mean, the Conservation Commission doesn't always want the land. It's very hard to get, it's a lot, it'd take multiple years to get a deed restriction. And a lot of the conservation trusts don't want necessarily all the land. So this is a viable option.
It works for me, what did you say, Bill?
Oh, I have no problem with it.
I mean, it is what it is. I mean, we need to make this change. We ran into it with ninety.
Ninety and vinyl, right.
And vinyl. So hopefully with this change, we won't run into it again.
Mm-hmm.
I think you have to look at the open space in the future of what you're actually getting in a flexible open space.
Right, and that's what this.
And that's what, I mean, and to make sure that it is a benefit to the town.
Right, and maybe, well, we can discuss that at another time. But I think for now, this remedies a situation that needs to be dealt with.
I have a little problem with that, because.
Okay.
Because my deal is with the Ellis State, I know more about this conservation. And if, you can't just give it to conservation. Because that at some point can then revert back to the BLS and then they can do whatever they want with it. So without a deed restriction on it, or conservation restriction on it, it's kind of like wide open. And I heard that from the Attorney General, which is because the Ellis State do not have a conservation restriction on it, that's what we say, it still doesn't have one, even though it's supposed to three years old. That's still not negotiable as far as the Attorney General is concerned. But it has to have a conservation restriction on it, or else it can revert back to the Board of Selectmen and they can sell it, or they can build anything else that they want on it. So, that's my only caveat to that is.
But this is different. This is very, very different. This is, if you take Invinyl and the amount of land that was around it initially, conservation did not want any part of it because it was five acres.
I know.
And once they did a little quid pro quo with the school, et cetera, it's now nine acres of land, 13 acres total. So conservation is taking it, they will put a restriction on it, end of story. If it's a flexible open space and it goes into the homeowners association, it's deed restricted within the homeowners association, it can never be used for anything else, ever. So, you know, I understand what you're saying for these large tracts of land. In this particular instance with development, it's, I think it's apples and oranges.
Yeah, I think your issue Patty is with one of the other options that already exists in getting a deed restriction on it. This, this is kind of a different avenue and a different animal, so.
Okay, yeah, like I said, it's just one of those issues that, but it's a larger issue also than just an open space development. Just so people, yeah.
Well, Patty, is your point maybe to like the actual jargon that's used, like deed restriction versus conservation restriction? Is that kind of what you're getting at? I don't, I'm not enough of a land use lawyer to know the nuances between those.
Well, it's a deed restriction because it stays private property, correct?
It stays private property.
Yeah, so the private property's not gonna revert to Board of Selectment ownership because it's private property, so.
And it's, or an E-protected open space or ownership by a homeowners association trust and subject to recorded deed restriction. There you have it, it's deed restricted, okay? All right, Karen?
I mean, so, I mean, at this point, Town Council has not reviewed the wording, but we will certainly run it by Town Council prior to, you know, probably the next month to make sure that she has no problem.
We also have to have a public hearing on this, do we not?
Right, yes.
So this will come up again.
And, I mean, it'll come up in the zoning workshop too. The zoning workshop is not just for the, it's for all the articles that we will be dealing with at town meeting. So if anybody has any other comments on this, you know, please get them to us because, you know, the more comments we have, the better, the better we can, you know, address issues.
Well, yeah, like I said, because we'll be waiting for Mr. Wiggst to, yeah, so.
He didn't put a deed restriction on his property?
That was a different animal.
Yeah, it was 40B.
Right, that's a 40B, and so that's, I mean, this is just under flexible open space.
Are you all set yet?
All right, moving rapidly along to map amendment, what is?
All right, so we put in a, just a placeholder at the moment. We, the nineteen, the current zoning map shows the 1972 floodplain line and some of the, there's been ident, we have to, one area has been identified is not corresponding with what the 1972 flood map shows. And we're going to try to reconcile the difference between what the 1972 flood map really shows and what's on the zoning map right now, to make them so they are, they're supposed to be the same thing. And we are trying to work with a consultant to figure out how best to do this. We're not changing the 72 floodplain map, we're not changing anything to make it correspond to FEMA. We're just trying to get what the 72 floodplain map shows. And it shows, some of the information is based on the 10-foot contour, 50 feet behind a seawall, or different, 50 feet from a street, from the edge of a stream. So all we're trying to do is make what's shown on the current zoning map correspond with what that says. Because some areas are different because of the way it might have been originally stretched or something to fit on the map.
So on the online zoning map and on our paper zoning map, there appear to be some kind of inconsistencies between the actual 72 map, which the zoning layer is supposed to be based off of and what is on the map, you know, online. But just so folks know, when it comes to the Building Department and they look at your property, they look at the 1972 map itself, they don't pull out the zoning map per se and they're not looking at the zoning line, you know, zoning online map per se, they're looking at the 1972 map. So we haven't, I guess, enforced this inconsistency incorrectly, if you will. It's just kind of a, we want to make sure what's presented online is the same as what's on our paper map here in town hall. So it's, we see this as like a housekeeping kind of clarification. And the other thing is that we might, in terms of just budget, we need to acquire, you know, get a GIS consultant to pull that layer off our existing zoning map, overlay it with the 72 map and see what tweaks we have to make. So that's why we have a placeholder in there now. Hopefully, we can get a quote and get the, everything teed up for, for town meeting.
I mean, in actuality, there should be a disclaimer on the map too, saying, you know, you have to.
It's for planning purposes.
It's for planning purposes only.
Yeah, and you come into the Building Department and they say you're in or you're out, and they pull out this 1972 map. You know, anything on all of our online services as it relates to GIS was for planning purposes. You can't look at a map that shows the entire town on a screen this big and necessarily, you know, make regol or survey kind of determinations. You need to go in and look at, you know, the specific, talk to Town Hall and look at the maps here or look at, you know, the official kind of document itself. So, again, that for planning purposes only map that's available online does not appear to be consistent with that. And again, it's not grossly inconsistent, we found one area near First Ave where it appeared to be off, so.
All right, housekeeping.
Housekeeping, yep.
As, as part of that, since we're working on this, is there any way we can, I don't, I don't, I guess I don't feel comfortable referring to a 1972 paper map. Like, shouldn't we be superseding an old map like that with, with the updated revised one as the point of reference?
Well, that's, I mean, again, it's intended to be the same line. So what's online is just meant to reflect the 1972 layer, 1972 map. If we were to then remap or move this boundary, that's a whole nother process. That's actually amending that zoning district or that line. That's something that was considered, the previous town administrator, right when I came on board, they were talking about amending that district. You know, we have not been in discussions on that in the last year or so. Certainly something, I think, worthy of discussion. But this right now is just literally making sure something that is online and printed on the zoning map confers, you know, correlates to the, where it's supposed to be coming from, the 1972 map. But I understand where you're coming from, that, you know, is this a dated line? Should we be reconsidering or aligning it with the FEMA flood maps? All of those things have been out there and we've talked about possibilities of updating that district. But that is not what we're talking about for this potential update.
Okay, yeah, I get it, I just, it just seems silly to like go to the Building Department, pull out a map from 1972.
But that's what's referenced in the zoning bylaw right now.
Yeah, I guess that's my point, is if we could work in the next, you know, you said it was an initiative that fell off the bus, you know, during the last town administrator, but if that's something we could do, it seems like it would be, makes sense.
Let's get this other thing through first.
Yeah.
Anything else, Bill? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And then we'll have to see if any citizen petition comes in and that would be, you know, they would be involved in the zoning workshop, et cetera, too.
Karen, do you have any questions? No, that's one of the great jobs.
Okay, anything else perhaps, Brad?
No, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to leave, I just, I think I was happy for the first thing to be over. Forgot, forgot that I was still on the agenda, so I apologize.
That's why you're here, thank you.
Well, happy holidays if I don't see you in events.
Oh, you will.
I'll see you plenty of you, yeah.
We don't get, we don't get far away, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, you are here for?
Curtis.
Oh, I am so, so, so sorry.
I was afraid you were going to send a phone.
They, they sent in a withdrawal request, they didn't want to come in tonight.
Oh, okay.
They're not ready.
So we're just trying to get an idea of what's going on, because. I'm Ed Whalen, my wife Kate Whalen, 113 Sedgwick Drive. So we're seeing all this construction, we've been, we've been at some of the meetings before and we're just trying to figure out what's going on over there right now. And all we're seeing is bulldozers back and forth and no actual building and.
All right, well, we have the planning development report and I think ninety and vinyl is part of our.
I can give you an update on the project.
All right, why don't we give an update? We can forego some of this other stuff since you're here, so then you can go home, okay?
I guess, my name's Kate, I just want to know what's gonna be behind our house. Because there's all these like neighborhood rumors, like the backstory is, it may not be a house structure. It could be some type of septic system, structure because there's a unifi, I don't know. I'm a nurse, I take care of trauma patients, so I don't know this, but, you know, I said, you know, it's okay to see a house behind there, but is Deer Island gonna be behind my back door? Because of that, whatever people came back with the last time was, it would be a community septic.
It's in the front of the development on and final.
Okay, all right, to our neighbors, I can de-escalate them a little bit.
Yes, you can.
All right.
It's supposed to be maintained as a meadow too, not as a big mounded lawn, so.
See, our septic is a sand filter system and our entire backyard is Deer Island. So the water, you know what I mean, like the water table business is a concern for all those who are but there because we have all the trees are gone now.
Right.
So, so the, you know, the concern of the water table, you know, and everyone, you get it, everyone.
We do, we consider, yeah.
I mean, people can, are welcome to come in during the day and look at the plans. We have the approved endorsed plans in the planning office. People are more than welcome to come in. They are in the process of, they just completed the drain manhole into Anvino Road from Basin 2, which said which, Basin 2 and Basin 3 are over on that side, there's four drainage basins. And so that connection to Anvino Road has been done, which will hopefully eliminate some of the water that's been flowing down Anvino Road, capturing it in the drain, in the town drainage system now where it used to go further down the road. So that part has been done. They are in the process, they put the binder down a couple of weeks ago. And so their next phase is trying to finish up some, tie all the drainage basins into the drainage system. And then they'll be coming in for lot releases to start building the houses, which there'll be 16 houses on the site. But they weren't, weren't quite ready tonight because they are working to try to get their, right now, we have a surety in the form of covenant, they're trying to work on a bond, a performance bond, and they just weren't, it didn't all come together for tonight.
Well, that's, that's, I mean, that was worth coming in, honestly.
You know what?
In meadow, that was a good one, I liked that one.
You can stay.
Seriously. But no, anytime you or your neighbors have a concern, call the office. Rumors are terrible things and they get people upset. And it can be diffused very easily with just a quick phone call.
Right, I mean, the fact that the construction is so close to our backyards, we can hear conversation of the men.
Tell them to go with it.
So, no, so it's so close, then that sort of is like, and we're used to green trees.
Right, I mean, there is.
So that's another like paradigm shift for the comfort of it all.
There is a buffer, you know, on there.
But anyways, all right, very good, thank you for your time, thanks.
Oh, thank you for coming in, thank you. While we resolve the septic issue.
Thanks, that's like, that's awesome. That's all I'm worried about, I'm really a city kid down here.
All right, thank you, minutes.
I move to approve the minute meetings for November 28, November 29, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Accounting.
I move to approve the requisition of $75 to J and R Graphics for business cards for Kyle Boyd, for $3,866.40 to Horstley Witten for inspections and reports for Seaside and Situit, for $650 to Merrill Corporation for peer review of Six McDonald Terrace, for $9.93 to Brad Washburn for mileage reimbursement, and for $125 to Arches Company for typewriter maintenance contract.
Is there a second? Any discussion? $9 and change for. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Best train type, best.
Kyle Boyd is the Coastal Resource Officer, so he's under the Planning Department. He doesn't really have a budget, so we have to share our budget with him, so.
There you go.
Do we still have a typewriter?
Yeah, we do, and we occasionally.
Maintain one in town.
We occasionally use it for, you know, things, and it's one of the only working ones in town hall. So we just try to, you know, other people will come to try to use ours too.
We should just put a plug on it, make it look great.
Players on reports. Anybody with anything?
I don't really have much.
CPC met Monday night, they're going, Rain Devon was in concerning the gazebo. They're looking for money for enhancing the gazebo and making it look wonderful. There's that. And then the Fields, presentation had been made before the selectmen and they came into CPC looking for a lot of money. So, they will be coming before us probably in January for administrative site plan or something. And they need to sell this to CPC, because it's a lot of money. And I don't think the town is ready for another override, do you? I don't think so. But Fields have been on the radar since the late 80s, early 90s, so here we are. Okay, planning and development, Karen, you're on.
All right, so January 10th is, you know, we'll have some regular business, plus we'll be having a zoning workshop that night, I mean, to go, to start going over the articles that will be on town meeting. Can everyone make it at 6:30 that night? We have, we have another candidate for a design review and so we want to interview that person and then try to make an appointment. then try to make an appointment very soon because we will be having a number of new development projects coming in.
Can you make it?
That's the 10th, something you just said? Yeah.
We are projecting to move the zoning public hearing from February 14th to February 7th, and so hopefully, everybody can make it then.
Can I say that again?
February 7th, zoning public hearing from February 14th. We'll still probably have a meeting on the 14th, but throwing in an extra meeting because town meeting is April 8th this year. It essentially makes everything move up two weeks in the deadline calendar to be a little bit earlier because of advertising and that kind of stuff. So let me know if you can't make it, but that's, hopefully, everybody can make it to February 7th. It's a Thursday. Yeah, it's the first Thursday of February.
And that's at 7 o'clock, too?
Yes. All right, 50 Country Way, the, the top coat has been put on, the emergency egress has been paved. The fire truck went down the emergency egress the other day. We were there for the fire, the fire truck was able, engine three was able to make it down, and supposedly, today, they were installing the ball, the, you know, the bollards at either end of, right on the site and right down at Drew Place. And right now, they've infilled the island where the, where the fire truck went with reclaimed asphalt. In the spring, they would like to make that like a grasscrete type pavement. So that, they are projecting if the, and then doing the bollard lights and the MBTA right away by the end of the day on Monday. They are projecting temporary occupancy to be granted tomorrow, provided that the safety concerns are with the bollards and the chain and the signage being there. Because what, they typically would have people move in on the 1st or the 15th. So it seems that if all that stuff is done and pictures sent, that deputy fire chief building, and I will probably sign off. I'm going out there first thing and meeting Bob Vogel out there first thing tomorrow morning to double check that. But they are supposed to send pictures, et cetera. They haven't done the sewer work for building A, so building A will be a little bit to tie in. And right now, McDougall Brothers, the site contractor, has the bond, and the owner, Peter Genta, McDougall would like Peter Genta to take over. So we're getting a new bond estimate to see what remaining work needs to be done, and then John Chesio will review it as the consulting engineer.
Bill?
Well said.
All right. So that's where we are on 50 Country Way. Seaside at Situate, all work has stopped in Sixth Ave, and so we, they will inform us when they are authorized to start working back in Sixth Ave. They're working on the townhouse side of the property, pretty much with clearing, and they've been trucking off the brick off-site. The concrete, none of the concrete that's been broken up into big pieces has been trucked off-site yet. The remediation will probably occur after the first of the year, sometime in January. They just got the results back on the, there was a little bit higher levels of zinc on some of the places, so they, those results just came back. So they have to have, because it has to be live loaded, they have to have all the places, the place where all the soil is going to predetermined, et cetera, and the actual amounts, et cetera, done before the remediation can actually start. The remediation areas have been staked and flagged off, and they will be having fencing around them prior to them being, you know, the work area removed. They are looking to start model homes probably in the next month or so. However, the master elevations have not been approved yet. I asked them to show the carriage-style garage doors on them because in the event that, that's what's, that's what's required. And in the event that, say, everybody in the town who's familiar with the project goes away in the next two years, we want to make sure that these carriage-style doors are shown on a graphic image and not just in the verbiage of the decision. They're looking at alternative drainage for where the drain line is going to cross Hathaway Road. It's conflict, it would run into one of the waterline pipes, so, and they'll still have the equivalent drainage going, but they have to do it in a different manner. They're also looking at some alternatives by the trailer, too, for, because water has been flowing over the road, and we emphasize this all the time, that they need to keep the water on-site. And they have been, they are trying to engineer a solution for that. When they actually start grubbing, they're going to be working on small areas. They will not do wholesale grubbing of the site. They're probably going to start by doing the area where the model homes and trying to get the swell in along Sixth Ave. And they are probably going to be looking to install some temporary sumps at sort of near the front of the site as well. But their environmental consulting, LEC, has been out there monitoring the SWIP and coming up with a plan to address some of the water. So things are, things are going to start to probably ramp up, you know, at the beginning of the year. And I think that's kind of where we are. I expect to have, we've been told a number of projects are going to come in, so I would be expecting this winter to be pretty, pretty busy.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? Any questions? Any concerns? Anything?
I'm here for driving down 38. Two more cars before we go.
I'll entertain Bill's motion. Second. All those in favor?